Welcome to the September 4th meeting of the Half Moon Bay City Council. May I have roll call, please? Councilmember Eisen?
Here.
Councilmember Reddick?
Here.
Vice Mayor Warback?
Here.
Mayor Penrose?
Here.
You have a quorum. Can we stand for the pledge of allegiance? We have no proclamations and presentations this morning. I do have a couple of announcements of community activities. The first is on September the 11th at Brews &amp; Views Speaker Series. They'll be discussing farmland and affordable housing and the conflicts between the two. The Housing Leadership Council will be there. Then Wright from Post will be there. Supervisor Don Horstly, Rich Gordon will be there. Should be an interesting discussion. The second is on October's the 6th. The WCLN, the Women's Community League Network, will be holding a Saturday morning training at the Half Moon Bay Library on how to be appointed to local boards, commissions, and committees. Something that our citizens should be aware of and maybe take advantage of. There is nothing to report out from our recent closed session. City Manager, do you have updates?
Not this evening, thank you.
Oh my God. We're up to public forum. We have one speaker, and that's Eric Hollister.
Thank you for hearing me, City Council, citizens of Half Moon Bay. I would like to take this moment and this time to establish the separation of the nursery that we would like to start with cannabis and a faulted movement and, as Dave Shore so eloquently put it, "a red herring amongst us." There are trusted community leaders who have confirmed with myself and others here in Half Moon Bay that one of the largest farms did bus in their own workforce to speak on behalf of cannabis. What's more, this farm has pushed for the entire cannabis value chain, both in the community, here at the city council meetings, and more specifically at the Coastside Cannabis Coalition. Our nursery that we are trying to start here in Half Moon Bay is not in any way associated with this nursery giant or the pursuit of anything other than nursery stock and possibly testing. We are nursery, 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 as in that's all we have any interest in, not full cultivation, not manufacturing, not retail. We are local, 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 meaning we give locally, we invest locally, we hire locally, and we are clean, clean, clean. We are the clean genetic stock. We are clean as far as our local environmental regulations, and we are clean energy. In closing, I'd like to say that this ag giant or farmer has used their separation from cannabis more recently at a recent meeting as what I would like to call "a red herring" for their, let's just call horrendous light pollution that has essentially bewildered much of the citizens as to why it continues to exist. It is an environmental disaster, and it should be looked at more specifically in cannabis nurseries here in Half Moon Bay. I appreciate your time, Council.
Thank you, Eric. We have one more speaker. Robert Brownstone.
How's that? Great. My name is Robert Brownstone, and I am a candidate for city council here in Half Moon Bay. And just wanted to thank everyone for allowing me to speak for a moment. And the reason I am running for city council is I think it's a great time in terms of Half Moon Bay, in terms of the growth and the prospects here. I've been a resident here for over eight years. My partner Suzanne and I have raised five children, three of whom have gone through the school and education system here in Half Moon Bay. And I feel that as residents of Half Moon Bay, we are both, we're the guardians of the coast. And I think it's important to have smart, controlled growth. We have to, any kind of growth plan, we have to make sure that it's part of an overall plan and that we balance any growth with the environment. I worked for the Environmental Protection Agency for a couple of years, where I was the director of the Office of Civil Rights, and so environmental issues have always been forefront for me. I think this upcoming election in 2018 is being hailed as one of the most important elections in recent history, and I'm delighted that people realize that the Half Moon Bay election was that important. So whether it's a blue wave, a red wave, or green wave, I'm looking forward to being part of it, and hopefully one day we'll be joining you on the day us there. Thank you.
Thank you, Robert. We have several items in the consent calendar that the public wants to address, 1D and 1G. 1B? Who's pulling?
Me.
Okay. 1B, 1D, and 1G. Should we take a motion on the consent calendar without those items first? 1B, D, and G.
You want to pull J also?
I move the consent calendar items 1A, 1C, 1E, 1F, 1H, 1I, and 1J.
1K.
Oh, you want to leave 1K?
Yeah.
And 1K.
So I'll second that with the, I want to make one quick comment on 1J, which I'm very happy that that's happening, but I just want to state for the record that we want to have a community meeting scheduled for that community business listening session, and I think we have until the end of December before that item becomes something that's no longer funded by the city. So I look forward to discussing that, and we hope that people show up for that listening session.
Second.
And I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we'll start with item 1B.
So I pulled this item for a couple of reasons. One being that we had a discussion at the last meeting about including in our ban smoking on sidewalks, and as it turns out, sidewalks are not covered with this item. And the reason being that it was introduced last time in order to add the sidewalks, we'd have to take the ordinance back, amend it, and then reintroduce it and have a second hearing at a subsequent meeting. So I wanted us to be clear on what that process was and have a discussion about how we want to handle that. Otherwise, we would have to, you know, bring the ordinance back at some future date, you know, to add sidewalks. And we may want to tweak it in the future anyway, but the second reason why I wanted to open this back up was just to explain to folks why I voted the way I did. You know, there's been some discussion in the newspapers and other open forums that, you know, the council is our bigots, you know, we're against smokers, and I wanted to make it very clear, you know, where I stand on this issue. So I believe that if you want to smoke, you know, you have a right to smoke. However, the air, as water, is our commons, right? We share the air together. So if you're polluting the air, you're asking me to make a subsidy in my own health, in my own quality of life, to allow you to harm your own health and to serve, you know, your own addiction. So I believe that it's the job of government to protect our air and water for all of us and to minimize the impacts of smoking. So I'm not doing this because I'm anti-people and anti-smokers, so much as I'm about protecting the public from the impacts of your activities. And I feel that that's a right role of government, and it's not an overbearing role of government. It's protecting the air for all of us and the quality of life for all of us. And as we've known by studying the science, that, you know, cigarette smoke is a carcinogen. There's no more doubt about that, you know, whatsoever. And so I feel, knowing what I know, that it's, you know, my obligation to do what I can to protect others of us from those impacts. So that's the approach I'm taking. The finding that I make is that the public deserves the right to be protected from the impacts of your behavior. You don't have a right to pollute ultimately. So given that, the reason I proposed banning it on sidewalks is because sidewalks are a public good. We all use the sidewalks. They're not that wide. If you're smoking on a sidewalk and I have to walk out on the street to avoid the impacts of your smoking, that's a problem. So people use sidewalks. We want people to use sidewalks more. We want people to walk. We want more people to walk. We want pedestrian-friendly community. We can't do that if people are standing on the sidewalk and smoking cigarettes. So that's why I felt it was important to get sidewalks into the ordinance, and I would rather send it back to make that amendment and reintroduce it, even if it's still a couple of weeks out. So you want to smoke? That's fine, but you have to avoid impacting the others with your habit, and that's what this is all about. And others may have heard from others about other impacts. I've had some people say, "Well, you should allow medical cannabis vaping as well. It doesn't produce open vapor that people can smell or detect." So that's something else. But I wanted to raise this issue because I wanted to find out, three of us voted for it and felt it was important to include sidewalks, and so I want to hear from my fellow council members.
So, and I'll ask for some clarification on what you're looking for as well, but I couldn't agree more. And my understanding, yes, is that, are you suggesting that we revise this current amendment? Oh, I'm sorry, the current ordinance?
Yeah, otherwise it won't include sidewalks.
Right. So, but couldn't we just pass this and then add on to it, or would you rather?
Well, I consulted with the city attorney. Maybe I'll just ask her to...
Yeah, please define for us, yeah.
So there are essentially two procedural options. You could go ahead and vote on it this evening. I do have the direction to come back with language that would enact a broader ban, including sidewalks. So you could amend the ordinance adopted tonight if you choose to adopt it tonight. The other option would be to send the whole package back so that it could be re-presented with the sidewalk ban, and that would be a new notice public hearing.
Do you have a preference, or is there a preference procedurally from your perspective on which way that stuff works?
You know, I would suggest sending the whole package back. I think that would be a little cleaner, yeah. And while you're sending, I guess I would have one other point of clarification. We had talked about sidewalks at the last meeting. I've since had an opportunity to do a little bit of research, and there are jurisdictions that have banned smoking on sidewalks, but some of them also go so far as specifying rights of way or, as well as streets, which would include neighborhoods and don't necessarily have sidewalks. So if you have some additional thoughts about how to frame the sidewalk portion, that would be helpful for me.
I got additional thoughts. Let's ban smoking everywhere outdoors. I've maintained that that's the cleanest way. Nobody's going to go around with a tape measure seeing whether it's 20 feet away from the doorway and whether the sidewalk exists or not exists. So I really think that that's the cleanest, simplest way. It may seem extreme, but I think it makes sense.
I'm, a couple of thoughts about that. My first thought about your comment, Councilmember Warback, is that it is safer for the children of smokers if that parent goes outside and smokes than it is if they smoke inside their apartment or in their home. So I am unwilling to ban all outdoor smoking. I mean, to enforce all outdoor smoking ban. Yeah, that's right. The other thing that I'd like us to consider in it is allowing the vaping of medical marijuana in all homes, multifamily, single-family residences. Yeah, but I want to include the multi, make an amendment to the multifamily dwelling one where we make sure people are allowed to vape medical marijuana.
The question of the right of, I would support that, actually. The question of the rights of way is that, so in neighborhoods and streets where we have right-of-way but no sidewalk, you know, not all of these rights of way are mowed properly. So you get a lot of tall, dry grass, like in the summer months. You know, we're doing a better job at mowing and things. If we have somebody walking in a right-of-way and tosses a cigarette, you know, especially if we're going to continue in, you know, the sorts of droughts that we've been having, you know, you get a fire hazard. So if we're going to ban it on sidewalks, we probably want to ban it on rights of ways, you know, given, you know, the hazard with the dry grass. I see it in my neighborhood, you know, some of it's, you know, foot-high. So, and, you know, the other reason is, you know, if you participate in beach cleanup or cleanup of Pelrositos Creek, and I recommend it, it's coming up a week from Saturday, billions, gazillions of cigarette butts. And so it starts by people throwing it in the streets, and then it gets pushed into the storm sewer system, and it ends up in the ocean or in the beach. So I think keeping it off sidewalks, keeping it off rights of way is good. And, you know, people think, you know, that there's going to cost to develop this ordinance. Well, there's a cost to having to clean up cigarette butts, you know, there's a health insurance cost, there's all kinds of costs associated with not controlling smoking. So I think we want to probably tackle the rights of way issue as well, so.
So rights of way would include streets, basically? I mean, because you've got plenty of neighborhoods without sidewalks, so what is somebody going to do there?
Well, you know, ideally, you don't want it in the streets either, for the same reason. It gets into the storm sewer system. So the grassy rights of way are the thing between the street and the house, or the street and the fence that I was thinking about, but...
Need to add street...
The problem with streets is then you have to get people out of their cars if they're smoking. I mean, you said you're allowed to smoke in your car if you're on the street. That gets very complicated. I think rights of way handles most of it. But why don't we send it back to Catherine and have her look at it?
Thank you, yes. That's really helpful input, and I'll bring back an ordinance responsive. Thank you.
And Catherine, also include vaping of medical marijuana in multifamily dwellings in the proposed ordinance. Okay? Do you need direction to that effect?
It sounds like I've gotten, I've heard direction from...
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
So do we need to make a, yeah, a motion to bring it back?
I would suggest that you table this item. Yeah. Item is tabled. Can I have a motion to table the item?
To be clear, so tabling it doesn't mean it's not coming back, right? Okay, all right. Motion to table.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we're going to have the public speak on item 1D. David Seaton?
David Seaton, Al Granada, a member of Granada Community Services District. When I saw this, I just wanted to, you know, speak, because I've spoken out about it as a member-director of Granada Community Services District, and it's interesting, specifically the area by the jetty. It's an interesting area where you have multiple agency responsibility. You have Half Moon Bay, which has responsibility for the beaches. You have Caltrans, which is right there. You have Granada Community Services District, which has a parcel property plus responsibility for trash. You have the Harbor District, which has their area. And yet, it's an area where there's, there's been multiple videos of just trash, you know, where it piles up, there's not enough receptacles. Offshore winds come, blow everything into the ocean. From Miramar all the way down, you have multiple homeowners which provide their own trash cans and own kind of makeshift trash collection system where, where people will come and pick up trash on the beach every week and, you know, also even unload some of the other trash cans that don't get picked up by, by recology. And it's just kind of interesting, kind of Venn diagram where, you know, an area that I think if, if Half Moon Bay probably had responsibility as a whole, there wouldn't be those issues that would slip into kind of these gray areas. But instead, there's all these excuses that are able to get made in terms of, you know, Granada is able to say, "Well, Half Moon Bay has responsibility for all the people on the beach, and if they're not packing it in and packing it out," then, you know, and then, you know, recology has said that there's, there might be a solution with the Harbor District, that they have their own trash collection on weekends, and they might be able to use some of their staff to, you know, especially on the big weekends, to take some of that so it doesn't pile up, and he's, you know, and I just think as far as, you know, yeah, I'm with you guys in terms of the authorization of signature to save the bay letter, but in terms of taking it a step further, I'm thinking, you know, I'm asking maybe you guys are the right agency to take the leadership and say, "Okay, of these different agencies, that is kind of a, you know, unique Venn diagram type area of ownership where there are some gray areas of responsibility. Let's come together and figure out how, you know, we could all kind of solve this problem together." And so I think, you know, it's something that I've thought about over, over time, and so when I saw this issue, when I saw this come up, and, you know, hopefully Granada takes it up as an agenda item, but I'd also, you know, ask you guys, and maybe you guys are the right position to, to take a leadership role in, in getting all those agencies together. And, you know, there's a ton of videos that people have sent out on Facebook last, probably, you know, especially some of these big summer months we've had a couple of months ago, and it's just something that just needs to end. I mean, just something simple where we need to solve it. So, thank you.
Thank you. Sure. Brief.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's a good topic. Thanks for bringing it up. So I think it sounds like there's, yeah, it's, there's a lot of gray area out there. It's hard to really say, it sounds like there's multiple garbage agencies even responsible for picking up possibly in that area, different districts, different responsibilities for who's in charge of what. You know, like, we have a couple of those beaches, but then recology picks up the garbage there. We're not contracted with recology. You know, there's different pieces of that pie that probably should be ironed out at some point, be, add it to the, to the list of things.
And now for item 1G. Oh, John.
I actually didn't know any of this was happening, but I reached out to Chuck Duffy with Granada today to say, "We've got to figure out a solution for Surfers Beach and some of these issues with the trash," and that overlaps. So we're working on it. I don't know if we can get to the full solution, but Chuck and I are going to try to work through that issue and see if there's an answer.
Excellent. Thank you, John.
We do need a motion on 1D, Mayor.
I move item 1D, consent item 1D.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we have one speaker for item 1G, Jerry Steinberg.
My name is Jerry Steinberg, 591 Terrace Avenue, Half Moon Bay. What I'd like to do is speak on this particular item, which is the amendment to number four, to the Professional Services Agreement with PME Inc. We support the contract for services of Ray Rizavi. Having worked with Ray on the Main Street Bridge Project and his work to expedite safety on Highway 1, we also believe that the city council members on the Mobility Committee should be addressing the issues on the North Highway 1 project. Ray brought attention at a city council meeting a while back for the need to split the $6 million grant from the San Mateo Transit Authority into two projects. This was to allow the use of Caltrans' method of project engineering of... This was to allow the use of Caltrans' method of project engineering evaluation review, called PIER, rather than a full report with EIR to expedite the project. The Caltrans' PIER review process can be applied to straightforward, simple projects of $3 million or less. Thus, the South Highway project meets this criteria. However, the North Highway 1 project involves many corrective items for previous work not fully approved or completed by Caltrans. In addition, money from Alianto Properties of $3.4 million has been called in and added to the $3 million dollars from the San Mateo County Transit Authority for a total of $6.4 million for the North Highway 1 project. Thus, Caltrans would require a full report and EIR for the North project. The Half Moon Bay City Engineering Staff needs input from the Mobility Committee to fully understand the past history and the issues related to this project. In addition, a full report and EIR is necessary to assure a successful safety project. Thank you.
Thank you, Jerry.
Jerry, the Mobility Committee is going to meet next week. John is going to tell us when.
Tuesday night.
Tuesday night, at, when?
4:30.
4:30 at City Hall Meeting Room. Public is invited, and they can, public can make public comments, it'll be a regular agendized committee meeting. And with that, I move item, consent item 1G.
I second, and we hope to see you there.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. With that, we move on to item 2A.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is the fifth public hearing in introduction of an ordinance to change the city's electoral system from at-large to by-district elections, establishing those district boundaries and sequencing of elections within the districts. Our demographer is here, and will provide a brief history as to how we got to this point, and he, myself, and our city attorney are all available to answer any questions you may have.
Good evening, I'm Doug Johnson from NDC, it's a pleasure to be with you. And one note is, you kind of come to the end of this process, I will let you know that you remain not alone. Pacifica and Redwood City both got letters in the last couple of weeks, and will be starting the districting, well, are looking at starting the districting process, so it looks like about 20 letters went out across the state about three weeks ago, so. The California Voting Rights Act continues its role across the state. So in terms of your process, as you may remember, we started back in May, kicking off the project, encouraging the public to get involved and to share their thoughts in terms of how the process should go and the line should be drawn. In July, we posted the first draft maps, and the council went through a series of six maps, suggested some changes to them, that led to maps, two focus maps at the end, and then at your last meeting, the council chose the map on the screen, 106B. Obviously, we're zoomed in on the denser part of the city, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have about this, or about sequencing, or any of the other related things. Just as, of course, as a note for the public, this is for the 2020 elections, not for this 2018 election. So, happy to answer any questions you have, or provide any other information that'd be useful, and thank you.
Thank you. Counsel, are there any questions?
No.
Okay, can I have a motion, please?
Open the public hearing.
Closing the public hearing. Now, do I get a motion? I move that we adopt an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Half Moon Bay, amending Chapter 1.24 of the Half Moon Bay Municipal Code, to add Section 1.24.090 to change the city's electoral system from at-large to by-district elections with respect to electing members of the city council, establishing boundaries and sequencing of elections within districts.
Second.
Do we need a roll call? Can I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Eisen?
Yes.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Rhabak?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you very much, and congratulations.
Thank you. I don't know if congratulations is appropriate, but it is what it is. Yeah, we're moving on to item 2B.
So I'm going to recuse myself for item 2B. It's the reintroduction of the ordinance replacing the second dwelling units, and I have a second dwelling unit at my residence, so I will not be part of this process in any way, shape, or form.
All right, shall we begin? Back by popular demand, we have reintroduction of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. Okay, she tells me I can do this. You can't, well... I think it is. There we go, okay, thank you. All right, in brief, because you've seen this before, very, very recently in July, we will skip the deep background and just focus on a couple tweaks that we wanted to make to the ordinance, which is why we are reintroducing it instead of being here with you with a second reading. Just for the good of the room, the purpose for this is to comply with state law, to follow Coastal Commission guidance with regards to accessory dwelling unit ordinances, and this process has gone through four meetings with Planning Commission oversight, as well as a time with you, where you considered a draft ordinance on July 17th, and there were a few things that you asked to have changed that night, and they are, they were introduced that way in July, but we, we wanted to confirm a few more things in, in our language. So the ordinance you have follows the direction that you gave us, where the PUD, the PUDX, Urban Reserve and Open Space Reserve districts were removed from the ordinance, and we put the owner occupancy requirement back into the ordinance, that's, that's what you have on the books right now. And we've received some feedback about the language in the ordinance, mostly with respect to ownership occupancy and use language, and you'll see that's where most of the redlining is, and that second, if two ordinances attached to your report, there's also one typo that we've been made aware of that we can fix for a second reading. But you'll notice that things like subleasing or controlled, we also added in tracking for discontinuation of the grandfathering for short-term rentals, that was something that we, we did not put in in the first go-round, and we think that's really important to do to acknowledge that that would be a non-conforming use that expires. And improved the parking finding, and made a more complete reference to the parking code. In your staff report, there's an attached letter, and it is from the real estate group. They were concerned about the owner occupancy requirement, and we've heard some different thinking about providing some temporary relief to that. We didn't put it in the ordinance, because that hasn't come from you, that was just another idea out in the community. So there's some language in the staff report that you could consider, there's other ways of doing it. We suggested if you were going to have some kind of waiver of the owner occupancy requirement, that it'd be limited to, and we thought two years out of 10 was reasonable. Two years covers a lot of different kinds of things where people are moving away, for example, a sabbatical, or some kind of extended travel and that kind of thing, so it seemed reasonable to us. And we would not want to have a hearing for that kind of a thing, but make some kind of finding to, to grant that is, is the suggestion. And we have language that we could work with you tonight if you're interested. And other than that, we are hoping that clarifying questions that we've already covered those, and you do need to have a public hearing again, and because we're having a second first reading, and then we look forward to moving, moving on to the next steps. Thanks.
And we have two cards. Bruce Russell.
Mayor Penrose, member of the council. I submitted some comments regarding earlier drafts of this ordinance. I think it was very important to strike a balance between creating more affordable housing through accessory dwelling units, but also preserving the nature and the character of the neighborhoods and the coastal resources. I think the staff has really improved the ordinance considerably, and has certainly incorporated a lot of... Mr. Kus mentioned that the realtors had suggested an exception to the owner occupancy requirement. I think the owner occupancy requirement is very important. I think it will really help preserve the character of the neighborhoods and the property on which accessory dwelling units are built. I think there can be some exceptions for owner occupancy based upon some kind of hardship, family matters, employment, relocations, things of that, but I don't think those exceptions should be automatic. I don't think somebody should just be able to avoid the owner occupancy requirement for two years, if the council's interested in such an exception. I think it would be preferable to have the community development director have to make a finding of hardship based on some criteria to permit the owner occupancy requirement not to be satisfied. The community development director makes all kinds of administrative determinations, it would not be difficult to make this, but people could not abuse the owner occupancy provision by just going on an extended two-year sabbatical, and therefore renting all of the property. So I have suggested some language to the staff that might address that issue if the council were so inclined, but I appreciate the opportunity to have participated in this, and I thank the staff for listening to my comments. Thank you.
Thank you, Bruce. And David Seaton.
Are you guys going to have any more discussion on it, or no? Some board? Is your board going to have any more discussion on this topic? Okay. So, yeah, you know, I guess, anyone against it, I think, you know, you look at it, this is kind of the wave that, that solves a lot of problems, in terms of you look at, even from a financial perspective, the, the profits that a developer would make from a big project versus shifting that into, you know, 50 different homeowners that would, you know, whether increase incremental value of the property, or increase their cash flow on a monthly basis, you know, it's definitely something that, that I think is beneficial to the general public at large. I think, I think the key is just, you know, you're seeing different cities that are being ahead of the curve in terms of what the state legislators wants to see, and different cities are adapting ahead of time, so it's just a matter of looking at kind of what other, you know, cities we want to, you know, Half Moon Bay wants to compare itself to, in terms of looking at some of the innovative ideas and, and processes that are starting to form, you know, in some of the neighboring communities around us. But I think at the same time, you know, that, that it is something, especially in a, in a community like Half Moon Bay, we have to be extra sensitive towards, in terms of, you know, even you look at it, some of the, you know, a long-time family that's owned a property for, for 70 years, and then all of a sudden, you know, there's an additional emotional value, I think, that, that goes through in terms of seeing a substandard lot being, you know, being built, you know, and, and so, you know, I, either way, I think that where I'm getting at is just that there's the appropriate remedy process, I think somebody mentioned in terms of the hearings, and then, you know, those types of things are in place where there are going to be, you know, emotions are going to run high as, as this takes, starts to take form, or whatever that eventually ends up being, and that there's an appropriate, you know, process from the city council to, to manage that in terms of both the hearings, the outreach, the communication, and, you know, everything else that takes place, you know, I think it's Half Moon Bay's community where, you know, as this starts to unfold, it's going to be, you know, obviously hot-bun issue, and so just to be extra sensitive to that. Thank you.
Thank you, David. Bring it back to council.
We started off with an ADU ordinance. The council had some input about whether or not we should allow them in PUDs and open The staff took note of what we had to say. We had a pretty good ordinance at that point, and then we had Bruce Russell make enormous number of constructive suggestions, which really tightened up the ordinance and made it even better. So I'm grateful to him, and I'm grateful to any member of the public who has constructive suggestions, we'd like to listen to them. And so I'm in favor of this ordinance, and I also agree that any exception to the owner occupancy should require a community development director hearing.
Yeah, this has come a long way. I, I do like the idea of the community development director making a finding of hardship. I don't know if that's a hearing, but I think the finding needs to be made, for sure. You know, people in our small town are very aware of what their neighbors are doing, and if somebody's got two non-owners living in their places while they're gone for a few years, somebody's going to notice, and then it's brought up to City Hall, and then we have to deal with it. It's better to have that process in place to deal with that upfront, so that everybody has some level of certainty about what's going on, and who's doing it, and for how long. In any case, I, I think that's a really good idea. I really appreciate staff working with the council and the community on multiple iterations. I'm starting to think, you know, because of these really important issues, you know, the smoking, the ADUs, there's going to be more, that we not rush the process, that we introduce a, you know, an ordinance, but maybe have a couple of meetings to, to talk about it, think about it, take input, and not necessarily do the snap one-two of introduction, second reading, you know, back-to-back, get it done with. I think people need time to chew on things. I probably heard from more people after the first reading of the smoking ordinance wanting changes than, you know, previously, and of course, that's not optimum, but it happens. So I think we need to sort of take a more relaxed approach to this process to make sure we cover, you know, the bases and everybody feels heard, so, just going forward. And thank you to Jill, and for working with the community on this.
Thank you, Jill. It, it was a long, hard struggle, and thank you, Mr. Russell, for your input. It was a long, hard struggle and thank you, Mr. Russell, for your input and anybody else in the community who contributed such good ideas to making this a great ordinance. I am in favor of it. I'm definitely in favor of the emergency clause and for there to be findings made by the community development director in the case of an emergency. I'm not sure about the two-year. I'm wondering if longer might be appropriate. I don't know. I don't know that two years seems a little bit arbitrary. I would vote for it unless somebody has another idea about another number of years. And that's kind of where I'm coming from. Yeah, and we can always change it. So can I hear a motion?
Before you make a motion, I think it would be helpful to actually clarify what language we are all agreeing to. As you know, we can't change it substantively after tonight. So we'll need to read in the language for this exception to the owner occupancy requirement. And I'm just going to check in with Jill to see if you have the language ready to go or if we need to take a recess or anything.
So we want to confirm two years with you. That was staff's recommendation, although we've heard different amounts of time from different people. And then we actually received some language. Again, I really enjoyed working with Bruce Russell on this and staff had language and he actually added on to it. And so I was going to go ahead and read that in. It's completely acceptable to us in terms of how to administer this and I'd be very comfortable making findings on this. So we're going to read in that we're going to add section 1833100 owner occupied exception. The owner occupancy requirement in sections 1833030I, 1833040J, and 1833080B may be waived by the community development director for a period not to exceed two years in any tenure period upon a finding of hardship due to medical, family, employment, or other special circumstances provided the owner retains ownership and establishes his or her intent to maintain the single-family dwelling or accessory dwelling unit as his or her primary residence.
Okay, can I have a motion then?
How would we frame that motion as the title included in the staff report with the amendment provided by the community development director? Yes, and you can clarify the new section 1833100 for owner occupied exception. And it would be fine to say with the language read in by the community development director. I move that we adopt an ordinance of the city council of the city of Half Moon Bay replacing chapter 18 dot 33, second dwelling units and amending related provisions of the zoning and subdivision titles of the Half Moon Bay municipal code, including an amendment requiring a finding of hardship. Is that sufficient? As read in by the community development director. As read by the community development director into the record.
Second.
And roll call.
Councilmember Reddick?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Robach?
Yes.
Mayor Penrose?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, Jill. We'll move on to item 2A and we do have one speaker card. 2B?
3A.
3A. And we have one speaker card, David Seaton.
Is that for 3A? Have Jill talk first.
Okay. We're ready. Thank you.
All righty, we are on the housing work plan confirmation and this is a, this is really a summary item. There's quite a few things in your staff report and we're not going to dig into any individual. One of these programs, what we're looking for is feedback on the whole and hoping that you see some of the things that you've been suggesting to us as well as things that have been coming up through community dialogue. So briefly, we'll cover some background options and get to your direction and talk about next steps. So the idea for putting together a housing work plan is really relative to the city council priority session setting this year as well as last year where affordable housing was one of your top priorities and remains so. We know the mayor's also been working on a process streamlining effort, engaging with quite a few members of the community, developers, contractors, et cetera. And you just took a look at the accessory dwelling in ordinance, so very relevant to what we're talking about here. And then we had the July 15th, very engaging, well-attended community conversation about housing. That was our first effort on that and we'll talk about the next step for that as well. But the intent is to get more input, to focus on what you'd like us to do for housing. We can't do everything that we've suggested in this plan in a year, maybe not in two years. We can probably get most of that done in two years if you're interested in all those items, but we need to be mindful of what your priorities are so we can pace ourselves through these things and what has the most, it just kind of impact from your perspective, what you're really looking for. So the other thing we're going to do with this housing work plan is link every program and effort that we put into it to housing element policy or programs because there's absolutely a crossover and we need to be demonstrating that we're implementing our housing elements. So this is one of the best ways to do that. So in your staff report, we put forward four categories of programs for your considerations. They were really based on the timeframe in terms of when the outcome of the program would be implemented, would be experienced in the community. So in terms of immediate needs, we suggested tenant protections and consideration of how to use the city's affordable housing fund as well as thinking about emergency housing options. Now for each of these slides, I've highlighted in green staff's recommendations of what we think would be appropriate to go with first. That doesn't mean you can't make those adjustments. So we're, but we are encouraging these two up front because we think tenant protections can be done in a fairly straightforward manner. It's an ordinance amendment. It's been done many times in other cities. Sematario County has a recent model for it and it would have a nice near-term effect and they tend to not be controversial the way things like rent control can be. Now with the affordable housing fund, folks, we know we've got $2.1 million. People know the city has that. We need to figure out how you want to spend that and what the process for allocating it is. So as a first step to getting that moving, we would suggest having that be up front for sharing some options with you, getting your feedback on how to structure that. We can share what other cities are doing with their funds. You probably already have thoughts about what you'd like to do with your fund. We pitched one idea in the staff report just to get thinking going on that. The idea there was to do a 25%, 75% split. The 25% would be funding service providers who would help with rental assistance, down payment assistance and other kinds of near-term needs. The 75% would be used for the more expensive, longer-term investment in housing production such as supporting site acquisition. So that was just to get it started. Okay, so next, these were, these are things that can help in the near term. And we're already doing some of it. So that one in blue, we got feedback about process and the key one here is how we're doing things in a coordinated development review process department-wide at city hall. So it's unsiloed. We meet every other week with every project that comes in, including public projects. That's something cities often forget to send their own projects to their own system. So we're doing both private and public projects and really improving our conveyance of coordinated comments to our applicants. It's possible to get comments that conflict. You need to work them out with other departments that have different interests. So we're good at this. I'm confident that we've improved significantly. John Doughty and I both have a lot of experience doing this in other cities. So I hope you're hearing better things and if you're not, tell me. There's a couple of fees that we want to come in and make some adjustments with. We have a relatively new fee schedule. It's just over a year old. Now that the ADU ordinance seems to be moving along, we have some things we need to adjust just because of it, but there's some other things that came up that we think would be helpful to our contractors and developers and homeowners and would be equitable and reasonable for the city to make some adjustments to. We are also working to use CEQA exemptions for infill sites. That is having a much simpler process of getting through the California Environmental Quality Act requirements when appropriate. There's very specific criteria for how to do this, but we've been, we've been working through that. Then design review, we are really interested in your direction on this. In the past, the city had an architectural review committee that was disbanded at one point and that function was returned to the planning commission, who is now your design review body. It's been fine except it gets hard when you have big projects and it's very difficult to do design review in a forum like this. And so we suggested two options to you. One is to reform an architectural review committee. That would be a volunteer group appointed by you, an advisory to the planning commission and the city council. We'd recommend no more than three members and we have some other ideas about that. Or to hire a kind of an advising architect from time to time and pass the cost through to the developer. The challenge with that is you just have that one opinion. It would be very expensive to have two or three people help you do that. So that's a couple thoughts there. Would love to know where you'd like us to go with that. Staff is really great at site plan review and that's that earliest, most kind of foundational thing that needs to be done well with early applications. But in terms of architecture and high-level design detail, we don't have an architect planner in our small staff. A lot of cities end up with one person like that, but we just don't have one of those. So, yep, okay. So then near and midterm, so these are sort of, some of these are easy and some are big bites. They tend to be ordinance amendments. So accessory dwelling unit ordinance, I was assuming that we're going to have a second first reading and I'm really happy that you did that. Thank you. Short-term rentals is something on the docket for us. We've been working on that. It is related to housing affordability. It's a big project. It's at least as big as the ADU project. So just want you to know that. We have had a study session with the planning commission on it and we are doing stakeholder work already because we were marching along to do that after ADU. So that's been going on and we intend to continue unless you redirect us. The other two that are shown in green are reasonably approachable. The parking standards, we don't intend to do an overhaul of the parking code, although someday it could probably use it, but we do, yeah, but we do think there could be some quick, meaningful adjustments. The city's parking code does not have a mixed-use parking standard and the multifamily parking requirements are untenable in the downtown. And so we end up having to make justifications for exceptions and it's really not that hard to pull those two things into the code.
So I think we need to take a close look at multifamily parking because, you know, during the day, everybody's working and it looks good, but at night, you know, we need to take a look at these places at night. I mean, you go down by Main Street Village, you know, there's a gazillion cars. So we want to make sure we understand night versus day and et cetera. Weekends, yeah, before we make that call, but yeah.
I remember counting cars in Sunny Valley in 1995 at night. So you're, yes. Okay. And the below-market rate ordinance, this is, this is not hard to do. It might not hit very many projects, but it's, it would be good to do this now because a window opened. There was case law, the Palmer case, that made it so jurisdictions could not require affordable housing units in rental projects through a BMR ordinance, below-market rate ordinance. And the state has overturned that. And so our code is limited to 10 units or more ownership housing. We can now add rental housing back in. So if someone is going to build a small apartment building, that would apply. You can also change your threshold. There's nothing magic about 10. It's just what we have. So if you were interested in adjusting that.
Is that the ordinance that we did in like 95? Is that the same?
I think so.
Yeah, okay.
It's probably, it probably needs gassing up in a couple other areas, but I'm confident that Catherine's got a staffer who's a guru on BMR ordinances and I don't think this is a big nut to crack. I really don't. We've got input on adjusting our home occupation standards, including from the chamber. We agree that would be great to do it, but it's really not the top dead center support for housing affordability. It certainly could help somebody earn some extra income if we had a little more relaxed home occupation allowance, but yeah, it could help with traffic. Yeah. Yeah. Half Moon Bay is actually pretty darn good about having a lot. Having been, it's actually pretty darn good about having a lot of folks who work at home. Higher levels of that than on the other side of the hill. People figuring that out, yeah, yeah. Small at development regulations want to do this. Working with the planning commission and study sessions on this, they've been improving projects. I've been improving projects at the director level. But to change the code, that's a lot of work, and I really don't want to take that on right now, and we're really honest with you. I think it's got a lot of nuance to it, and we've got, I think, a few too many other things to grapple with. Long-term, this is all about your LCP update. And we're in deep right now in the, working with the ad hoc subcommittee of the planning commission. And they're, they're through the lay-in chair of the chapters, and we've been preparing some things for them on housing, in particular in the development chapter, based on input we've had from council about the downtown core area, which is now named the Town Center, and a number of other ideas around things that we've heard. Shopping center retrofits, different kinds of infill, different kinds of housing, mobile home parks, and reimagined, et cetera, et cetera. To that end, or you'll see on the next slide, we're going to have the second community conversation about housing as a planning commission time, so the commission can attend, on October 23rd. And I'll have the details on the next slide. Also, an LCP update, we've heard direction from you about water policy, specifically with respect to priority water connections for affordable housing. We wanted to work on some categorical exclusion areas and also reconsider our Measure D allocation method. Not the 1%, the 1.5% population growth limits, but the actual way that units are allocated, possibly fractionally. And that was actually mentioned in your other staff report on ADUs, because we know that came up through that discussion. And there was also, there was an example in your staff report about a choice set I made about the Zabala House, because they didn't need any additional water connections, and their priority water connection is serving a priority use. The upstairs conversion of some lodging rooms to some housing units really shouldn't warrant needing to buy another connection when they had enough there. Now, if it turns out that they need another connection, they understand and they're on the record, they'll have to buy a non-priority connection. But that was a case where there was justification for maintaining what was there, and the priority use was in place, and it was not a bait-and-switch use situation that used to have been going for 20 years. So we're going to try to get a little more policy backup in our LCP updates, so we don't feel like we're flailing when these kinds of circumstances come up. It's very uncomfortable to have something like that happen when it just doesn't make sense. So that's the sum-up of the kinds of things we'd like to put in your housing work plan. Interested if you have anything to add, any new direction for us. Anything you don't like, we'll take it out. And then acknowledge next steps. We're, of course, interested in public comment tonight, your discussion and direction. We want to have that second community conversation about housing in October, to see what else comes through that as a filter, and then come back to you with a draft work plan late fall. And in the meantime, we're still going to work on some of the things we talked about. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to take a five-minute break. We'll come back at 8:19.
Thank you.
Okay, Jill, thank you for that great presentation. We will be bringing it back to council, but first we have a speaker. And that's David Seaton.
So, you know, I just want to commend you guys. I think I was at the meeting, I thought you guys did a great job. You know, I think I like how you guys are rolling up the second version of it. You know, I would say the one interesting feedback that I felt like a lot of people at the meeting had in terms of when we kind of were openly talking as far as concerns, were, you know, obviously everyone was talking about affordable housing. The other one was traffic. It was kind of interesting how the two are the top concerns for probably, you know, I would say the majority, most residents, but at the same time, they're kind of contrasting in terms of if you solve one of them, you kind of are creating more of an issue in the other area. And so, you know, how do you guys, how do you guys take a stand in terms of, you know, some of the solutions that you guys are going to be proposing that also does address some of the related traffic issues that are going to come up? And I think it's obviously a difficult issue. I feel like, you know, the general sense is that, you know, we'll deal with that down the road as it gets worse and worse and worse, but at some point, you know, I think you're already having people that are moving out of the coast specifically because of the traffic issues, not because of affordable housing. And then that's going to get worse as we solve the affordable housing issue. And so, you know, I think it's the same issue every community is having. I think I look at the recent talks where they're talking about turning all the BART overflow lots into affordable housing development and how that solves affordable housing and also, in their opinion, solves traffic because now those people aren't going to be one less car on the road in terms of commuting from that point out into where they work. And so, I would just encourage you guys to look at as you're solving the affordable housing issue, whether it's other kind of derivative things that are rolled out in terms of solving traffic, or if you're able to build that into the affordable housing model in terms of the transportation and, you know, biking and everything else, just because it is, you know, it is an issue that's kind of related with each other. Thank you.
Thank you, David. And we'll bring this back to council for discussion.
That was the only speaker?
Yes.
Thank you so much, Jill. That was very helpful. I jotted down some ideas. I didn't want to interrupt your presentation. So here's, for whatever it's worth, my two cents on a few of the issues that you had raised. I think it's important that the tenant protection ordinance comes back as soon as this fall. That's like a council member Kowalczek would say, "That's an easy win, and we should do it."
Oh, God, we're bringing him back?
We're bringing him back. I'm definitely in favor of reestablishing the Architectural Review Committee. I think it was a shame that we took it away, and I think the Planning Commission is not really the appropriate place to decide what the color of a house should be. And a three-member Architectural Review Committee with at least one architect, like we used to have, would be a very good step forward in expediting development. What else did I write here? I definitely think that we should devote at least a 75% of our affordable housing funds to acquiring new development opportunities. There are a lot of smart ideas, tiny houses, mixed-use developments. That money should definitely be spent helping build more affordable housing. The short-term rental thing, as you said, is going to be long and contentious. My own personal view is that it's more important to make sure that the character of the neighborhood is preserved than to allow some blocks with, you know, half of the houses being Airbnbs. So I understand that it's a source of, could be a source of revenue for the city, but I think we should be very careful about going nuts allowing short-term rentals willy-milly. As far as parking standards go, I believe that there's going to be less need for parking in the future. With shared vehicles, with, God willing, better public transportation, with an aging population, the need for having, you know, two parking spaces for every unit is probably not going to be there. So we should not be so uptight about making sure that there's all this parking space guaranteed. And lastly, you talk about the draft work plan, and I really, really encourage us to work hard on it. I think it's really important. Affordable housing is one of the high priorities of this council, so I'm looking forward to seeing what happens in the fall. And I really do thank you for all the work you've done. It's really very good.
Very good. Yeah, I agree with a lot of that stuff, so I'll go through my list. The Architectural Review, I couldn't, and it's funny because we had talked about that, you know, even back when we ran, I want to say, and somehow we haven't been able to get that going for whatever reason. But it should be, I think that we should have an Architectural Review Board, so I'm also in support of that. In terms of the money for affordable housing that we have, I'm much more on the side of spend, I'm not as much on the side of the 25%. I would say I'm much more in favor of the 75%, meaning I'd rather spend the money and invest in affordable housing as opposed to using the money to, I don't know, it sounded like supplement people's rents, or I couldn't, that was my interpretation of it, I probably didn't read that correctly, but I'd much be more in the acquisition portion of that and even possibly take that number to like 90-10 or something like that, from my perspective. Short-term rental, that's an interesting topic. I do agree that it's, there's a lot to it. There's a part of me that thinks that it almost should be completely illegal because neighborhoods are supposed to be neighborhoods, and originally that was the case. I think nobody was allowed to do short-term rentals. And really, everybody that's doing it, generally speaking, was breaking the law at the start because it used to be that for all residential neighborhoods, you had to rent for 30 days or longer. Airbnb seemed to just have let it self-flourish. And then there's also people that need to, you know, have a hard time making ends meet and need to be able to rent their place because as the report shows, you know, the average rent in Half Moon Bay has increased 54% since 2014, I think it said. That's quite a lot of money. So got to figure out how to make ends meet on all sides, but I'd be, I have my own perspective on short-term rentals that we'd need to get into as we go further into that one. Parking, parking, yeah, parking is an issue unfortunately. So, I mean, at some point, we're going to have to deal with that. I hope that you're right, that we move in the direction that you're suggesting, but, you know, I mean, in my neighborhood, our street gets very, very packed at night, and there's these like unwritten laws that everybody has their own space for their house, and you can't like park in somebody else's space, which is good because it's all unwritten and it's followed. But, you know, it's always interesting when somebody has somebody come from out of town and parks in somebody else's space, like the whole neighborhood's aghast and the people are walking around, and it's always, it's kind of funny. Small lot development regulations, I'm all for it. I like the way that you guys have been infilling and making exemptions to make that happen. There's a, there's a house going up right now, where is that, in Second or Third Street in the Arleta Park neighborhood, very small house. And, I mean, it's livable, so I think that's a smart use of land, so I think we should continue with that. And possibly, if we need to open up the window for people to complain about it before it happens, if that becomes a bigger issue, because I know, you know, neighbors and heights and different pieces of that pie, so, but I'm all for it. I think it's a good use of the land. And then water policy. I'm happy what you did with the Zabala House, and I think that, I know we have water issues in Half Moon Bay in terms of hookups. So I like the way that you did that. That was a good use and smart use, and I think we should continue to try to do that, if not figure out a way at some point to expand our actual inventory. I'm not sure how that goes. Those are mine.
So I'm just going to touch on the topics they've raised, and then I have my own little thing I'm going to do. I agree with having an ARC. I think that's really important. And so, when I was on the council years ago, we were the first council to actually have an ARC, and then somebody got rid of it later on, but it's a good idea.
How did it get rid of?
Because the new council didn't want it. Yeah.
Personality, isn't politics.
Yeah. I just want to point out with the 75-25% thing, so we actually discussed with our last city manager, that sort of a program, having some money available to assist with people staying in their homes if they hit hard times or had a crisis, what have you. As I recall, the city manager was told by Coastside Hope that they had that covered by the county, that they were pretty good in terms of funding, so we might want to confirm that. They're sort of a natural agency to deal with those funds, I think, but they seem to think it wasn't needed, but I think we ought to, you know, vet that idea. I do agree that, I'd like to see as much of that money spent on getting something built, but I also think there's an urgent need to keep people in their houses. So I do think we need to, if we can spend that 25%, I think we probably should, because there's a lot of, there is hardship out there. And, you know, we, if we have it in our means to help make a dent to that, I think we should. Tenant protections, so I think we want to be very careful about anything that's sort of a market intervention. I think there's some real injustices going on, so I definitely want to look at it, but I want, I want, when we discuss tenant protections, I want it to come back so we can have a general policy discussion to learn about it. I want to know what other people are doing, I want to know what it means before I actually dive into it, but I think we want it on our plate in the near term, for sure. I think it's going to be really important to define infill, because for years, there's been a segment of the community that defines infill is those green PUDs along Highway 1. Those are actually infill?
Yep.
So when we talk about infill, I think we need a definition of that probably in our updated LCP that says infill means the downtown core or within existing neighborhoods or something like that. So it can't be construed that a PUD is an infill development. And then, we were talking about small lot rules. I know that that's not on your plate in the near term. I just wanted to point out, so we did have an ordinance that sort of dealt with that. That was called the proportionality rule. And then the council that got rid of the ARC also got rid of the proportionality rule. And the proportionality rule basically says, you want to create the same sense of space on a small lot as you have in a bigger lot. So it may be that to create that sense of space, you don't max out the small lot, you actually have, you know, the setbacks that create the same amount of space around a small house. You actually get a smaller house on a small lot as opposed to maxing it out, so that the setbacks are like right up against the fence. So you actually get, with the proportionality rule, you get a smaller, real smaller, affordable house. So we might want to revisit that. That would be an easy fix, we just bring it back, you know, we tweak it maybe, and we have something to deal with small lots. I just want to point out that I was the mother of the proportionality rule, and I was very proud of my baby, and they killed my baby.
The baby that killed?
Yes, they strangled it. So there are some other things that I'm interested in. So I think you've done a good job at identifying the near-term actions. There are some things I think we can be looking at though, with an eye to a longer term, but I think we need to start looking at it now, and that's the idea of a community land trust. So we have Mid Peninsula, you know, housing that develops below-market rate units, and they manage them, or they farm out the management to somebody else. And because it's sort of county-funded and federal-funded, we can't really control who gets those units. So there's a lot of people from over the hill who can move over here, and currently with the senior housing especially, you know, you can't get on the list.
No.
Right? It's the waiting list, it's full. We need senior housing. So the thing about a community land trust, it's not like an open-space trust. It's, it's your own local nonprofit housing sort of agency, and cities and counties do it different ways. The city can actually, you know, be the startup for it, it can allot money to form the 501(c)(3), and then give some money to buy land or protect some initial properties. You know, you can buy a motel in turn into housing, you can take an existing apartment building, buy it, you know, determine the deed restrictions, and you have a local board, and you can have local people who live in it and who manage it. And I think if we really want, like, you know, places for service workers or seniors that want to downsize, I think we need to have a mechanism for controlling our housing stock locally, you know, some of our housing stock locally. So, you know, there's a lot of research already done out there, maybe somebody, you know, even an intern, you know, could just research how that works. I think it's worth looking at. Let's see. I thought, I really liked Jill's ideas. I really enjoyed reading the input from the housing meeting that we had. There was a lot of meat in there, I thought. And where was some of my notes? A lot of people brought up home sharing, so there's hip housing, and I know that we have been talking about them, we had a presentation by them. I think that's an interesting angle. I think home sharing is probably going to get bigger over time, and so I was thinking that maybe out of that 25%, there might be people willing to do home sharing if they had some like low-cost loan or a grant to maybe fix up their kitchen so that multiple people can share the home, and you have a kitchen that's workable by multiple parties, for instance, or maybe you need a bathroom retrofitted for an older person. But we might look at, are there people willing to home-share if they had some funds available to tweak their house to make home-sharing more feasible, for instance? Just throwing that out there. But I do think home sharing is a good idea, and maybe promoting that more with hip. I like the idea of multiple homes on a single lot. I'm not sure if maybe they're referring to like the issue on Poplar Street where you have a 5,000-square-foot lot, and you put a driveway down the middle, and you have two manufactured homes on each side of the driveway? I don't know how they did that, whether it was a lot want to just, I don't know, but that might be, you know, one thing to look at if we have some, you know, R2 lots or something, or R1 lots that we might divide up and allow manufactured homes. I think those ones on Poplar are really nice.
Are you talking the end of Poplar?
It's like in the middle of Poplar, east of, east of Highway 1.
Right across?
Yeah, right across, sort of, not quite in the middle when you're going towards Main Street. There's those four cute little houses, share it, like a little alley. I think that's a good use of space, you know, and it's still kind of a single-family home, but they're, you know, you got to get along, of course. Somebody mentioned conversion of hotels or inns to housing, something to just, you know, keep an eye out for, I think. You know, so we have 555 Kelley, and I know we're going to be bringing forward some discussion about comprehensive site plan for the shoreline area, but I'm starting to feel uncomfortable owning 555 Kelley and having it just sit there empty and deteriorating. So I think we either need to have a plan for it, or we need to do something with it. And maybe we swap it for a piece of land to build something, some housing. Maybe we, you know, the school district has that really horrible building on the corner that's falling apart, and it has raccoons living in the attic, you know, the roofs caving in, that messy thing across from Three Amigos next to the school district offices.
At the start.
So maybe we swap, build teacher housing there, and they can have 555 Kelley across from, you know, Cunha School. I don't know, but I think, I'd like to look at something for the district property, something for the 555 Kelley. It might be the place for the police station, but I want us to get cracking on that. I don't like that house sitting there empty. That really is starting to bother me. Let's see, farmworker housing, I think, is really important, and I think we're going to be having a proposal in the coming year from somebody. I hear rumors, I don't know exactly, but, so I'm in favor of that. Housing your workers, I think that's a good model, you know, just Google and Facebook starting to do a little bit of that. I think you create jobs or have jobs, you ought to provide, you know, something toward housing. But I was thinking, so maybe when we have a policy, when those come along, just throwing it out there, that we show, we provide some incentives or some leniency for farm labor housing, if they also set aside a piece of that, maybe as permanent supportive housing for the homeless population, right? So if you're going to do farmworker housing, maybe if you do a little more for homeless, you know, maybe we can make it worth your while somehow. But kill two birds with one stone. I'm looking to, you know, multiple, solve multiple problems with our policy decisions, And I think that was in one of the table comments too, was FEMA trailers for homeless, but anyway. I'm not too keen on the idea of converting RVs to housing units. I think there are a lot of problems with that, and we've got problems with it happening on a, you know, secretive basis now, and it's causing problems. I like the idea of RVs for transient housing and manufactured homes for permanent housing. So that's, that's basically my thoughts on this. I think we want to, as we bring forward policies, especially those that have, are like market interventions, that we look at them carefully, but that we move on them. We don't, we don't leave people in unjust situations if we can do something, you know, we got to think about it. And I think Jill has thought through this pretty well. And I do think we need to look at measure Ds for like ADUs and things, you know, if we're looking at it on a population basis, and the max you can have in an ADU is two people or something, maybe there's a, you know, a fraction that we take off so that we're not just giving it all to ADUs, but we have to be careful with that. But anyway, just some ideas, and, you know, I think you've done a, you know, really a good job, so.
Yeah. Jill, one of the things that I thought about when I was reading this report was how much work that went into it. And I also thought about how, ever since I've been on council, council has been throwing things at staff ad nauseam, just to the point where staff is constantly feeling overwhelmed. That's not a good thing. I look at the intermediate versus the near-term plan, and I think, oh my God, we've got to do some of these intermediate now. And yet, I hear from you that it's, it's too much, you can't do it all. I absolutely believe that. What I'm wondering is, what can we as council do to make that an easier job? Would it make sense to hire someone else, for instance? Have another staff person to be dealing with some of these issues? Housing is number one. We've heard that from the community, we've been saying it for four years, staff has been saying, yes, we agree with you, and yet we're talking about not getting some of these things done for another two or three years. So I don't know what the answer is, certainly, and I'm not asking you for the answer, but do you think more staffing would make a difference?
So the city manager and I discussed this a bit, and we have a few notions, and we're glad you brought it up. We don't think Half Moon Bay needs a full-time housing staff person, but during this time period, we could use a little help. We could also use some ongoing help to monitor housing that gets developed, because we're going to need to do that as we create more affordable housing that has restrictions around it. We have obligations to maintain it in that way. We've reached out to Sematoo County about that, you know, they've got their entire housing department, and whether or not they could be supportive. They are locally connected and available, and we have a lot of relationships with those staff people, and we can pursue things like that. So we're trying to find something that's a modest way to support getting more of these things done. And your receptiveness to that is really nice to hear, so we can pursue that more if you're interested.
Yeah, I'm definitely interested. I think, I think we need to put our money where our mouth is, you know, if we want all of, all of these things done, if we want ADUs dealt with, if we want short-term rentals dealt with, if we want homeless dealt with, if we want affordable housing built, parking, all, you know, any of these things done, they're all time-consuming. So how can council help you to get what you need, to get the job done that we say we want done? And I'm not just talking about council, I'm talking about the community, what the community has asked the council to ask you to do. So that's number one on my list. If we can come up with, with some way to do that, I'd like us to look at rearranging one or two of these things. I think tenant protections is number one. The 75-25% breakdown, I think, could be dealt with in maybe a different way. I'd like to see us keep 100% of that for investing in some land that we could build affordable housing on. I think $2 million is a tiny drop in the bucket for the kind of land we're talking about, to do anything of any significance, even if we do it in infill lots here and there. I'd like to let us, I'd like to have another look at our, I forget what we were calling it, but our donations to nonprofits, and last year, the way we determined how we were going to give money to different groups. Since Coastside Hope is so important to the community when it comes to housing, I'd like us to see making a grant to them a greater grant next year, maybe doubling or even tripling what we give them. But that has to be done in concert with talking to them. But that has to be done in concert with talking to them and what they feel their needs are, if, if they, I didn't get the sense that they were saying the county was taking care of that for them, but that they did have county help with that. So, I'd like us to look at that, and maybe that's the organization that should be doing the work to help the tenants out, rather than have staff take that on as another job, because if staff takes it on, then staff has to decide, well, who gets the money? You know, what's an emergency, how long do they get money for, are we giving first and last month deposit, that kind of thing. So, there might be another way to structure that. The ADU, the Measure D allocations, I'd like to see us move that up, so that when we do these ADUs, we have that as another encouragement, that if, if, if somebody knows that they're gonna get a Measure D, have a Measure D credit, then, then they're more likely, they're gonna be more likely to be more people able to do ADUs, we have more Measure Ds available, or partial Measure Ds available. So, I think that might be something we could look at a little bit earlier. Short-term rentals is something we need to look at, but I can't even begin to go there, that's such a huge thing. Parking standards, I'm not as concerned about parking standards, that's more of a quality-of-life issue, and right now, I'm thinking more in terms of emergency measures than trying to keep all of our neighbors happy. I'd rather see them housed first. Redoing our fee structure is great, I think the more we can do to encourage development in, in the way that the city wants that done, in terms of infill and downtown development, so I'd like to see us encourage that. I believe that we are dealing with the priority issue of water permits for below-market rate housing in our LCP update, so that's something that will be dealt with there, so I'm not as, I'm not as concerned about that, but I love the work that you did with the Zebala House. That's a great, great way to think outside the box. And I think that, that about covers it for me.
Do you have anything to say, Jill? Probably not that constructive, but thank you for all this input. We'll go back through our notes carefully, there's definitely some crossovers where you have consensus, and so that's the easiest part, and we'll start there, and then maybe bring back some options for some of the things where you'd like to bring in something new, or re-prioritize some items, and of course, we haven't thought through how some, some support with the housing function would, would work into this. Some of these things are very housing specialist-specific. Other pieces of this plan are better and better planning stuff that, you know, I do and Steph does, so we'll, we'll figure out how to, how to parse that out and what makes sense, so, I hope that's okay, we may have to go through a couple rounds on, on this, and, all right. Good, I'm glad we're having this dialogue, thank you very much.
Thank you, Jill.
Yeah, thanks for putting that together, it's, it's nice to get aligned on, on all these different pieces, 'cause quite a, quite a bunch of things here. So, I think bringing it back for more conversation is absolutely a great thing, and taking, having the takeaways from this particular one, great, great first step, or maybe like fifth step, or twentieth step, whatever it is, but, thank you.
Okay, anything else from council?
I have something I wanna bring up after this, but, yeah.
Maybe as part of a...
Future agenda?
Okay.
Okay, future agenda items?
Do you want to just do any of this?
No.
Good.
Okay, so, I'm driving home the other night, and I'm at the reservoir, on my way back up the hill.
Crystal Springs.
Crystal Springs Reservoir. I look up at the sky, and I'm looking, and it's gorgeous night, and there's stars out everywhere, and I'm going, what a beautiful night this is. I continue into Half Moon Bay as I, as I get home, and I realize that the stars that I could see at the reservoir, I cannot really see anymore in Half Moon Bay as much. And, and I've known this for a while, but I've never really, like, talked about it openly, and I realized that the light pollution in Half Moon Bay is so great, that we actually block out the ability to see the stars almost every night, especially, you know, it's radiating off, so, I don't know what we can do about it, but I wanna bring it up. I mean, most of that's coming from, from Rocket Farms. I know in our cannabis ordinance, we have all the stuff about making sure that light pollution doesn't get out, I know they're not, it doesn't sound like they're going that route anyways, but is there something that could be evolved? Because I would love to see stars again at night, which we can actually, I mean, we're actually in a great location to do so, and I think it'd be a huge benefit to the community if we could come up with some sort of plan, and possibly even help sponsor it or give a grant from the city to help with the process, I'm not sure how expensive it would be, but it would, it would be really nice to see stars.
I thought you were talking about all the airplane lights that I saw one night that I thought were stars.
Yeah, I don't know what we can do from an ordinance perspective, from a legality perspective, and then just from an asking perspective, but I'd be curious to research all the various mechanisms that we have at our capacity.
Well, I think some local cities or counties have what they call like dark skies.
Dark sky ordinances, sure. Not uncommon, but it takes a lot of research and a lot of legal staff time, so, don't know that we have the bandwidth to take that on in the current calendar year, but I would suggest that we have that in the hopper for council priority setting in 2019.
Because, you know, Rocket Farms seems like alien sightings, UFO sightings, it's, yeah, it's amazing.
And I just had friends move from that area to here, and they were saying how much more, how many more stars they see just over in this neighborhood, as opposed to even closer to, to there, so, you know, I was like, we gotta change this.
Anything else, council? Steph, this meeting is adjourned.
Thank you.